I would like to call this meeting to order. This is Monday, September 25th. Joint City Council Greenville Utilities Commission meeting to order. And I would make sure we have a call with our city council members.
The chair also called GUC.
Okay. And the GUC commissioners called meeting to order. The secretary, do we have a call?
Yes, sir. We have a call.
Thank you.
So, do we have to call the room immediately? Okay. May I please call the room?
Mayor Smith.
President.
Mayor Mayor Tim Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Baller.
Present.
Councilmember Godley.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Conley.
Here.
Councilmember Mercer. And we have four. Thank you.
Is it legal with your day? Okay, thanks. So now we have. You can see we're trying to move through this. We want to have approval of the agenda. So if there are any adjustments or corrections or anything that need to be added to the agenda from the city council there.
Mayor Mr. Page.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in probably second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. I say aye.
I ask the GUC commissioners for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Now, second, all in favor, aye. So, take the approval. Thank you.
Okay. So, we are at public comment portion. This is for issues that are germane to both the city council and the Greenville Utilities Commission. So, the public comment period is a pure reserve for committed comments on public items that were on schedule to be subject to public hearings conducted at the same meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes will be allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who are registered with the city clerk will speak in the order of register until the allocated 30 minutes have expired. And the time remaining after all persons who register have spoken. Individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allocated 30 minutes have expired. Mayor clerk, do we have anyone registered to speak?
No one has registered.
Okay. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak? None? I declare the public comment period closed. And now we need to have approval of proposed minutes.
Just to prove the April 24th minutes.
You second it, bros? I mean, council, Mayor Paul Ching, okay? So, it's been moved in probably second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. I say aye.
From a GUC perspective, approval of the proposed minutes, today, April 24th.
I should ask you.
Move to approve.
Our motions?
Aye.
Now, second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those like aye? So, accept and move. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we have a consideration of joint pay and benefits committee recommendations for the plan year 2018 medical and dental benefits. And so, we're going to call on Mr. Cowan and Mr. Page. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael and I are going to tag team the presentation today. We do have some support from Mercer. Jason Wong is with us. Jason is our go-to day-to-day contact with Mercer, and he's also the numbers guy, which we find real helpful having him in the room when we make presentations. What we're going to be covering with you this evening, there we go, is a quick review of our three-year strategy for health and dental insurance. If you go back two years ago, there was a recommendation from members of these boards to try to put our medical and dental plans and what we want to achieve in a multi-year strategy versus coming to you every year kind of cold and out of the box with what we want to do that particular year. You wanted a little greater context. So, we put that together and presented it to you last year. Both boards adopted it last year. The action taken last year was the first year of the plan. We'll be focusing today on the second year, the 2018 recommendations of the strategy. And then, we're going to talk a little bit about our 2018 medical and dental projections and the associated recommendations from the Joint Pay and Benefits Committee. Of course, that committee consists of two city council members, councilmembers Glover and Smiley, and two commissioners, commissioners Butler and Jacobs. Ms. Jacobs isn't here today. So, slide three in your packet provides an overview of our three-year strategy. And at a high level, what we were trying to achieve with this strategy was first and foremost to provide market-appropriate benefits packages for employees. We want benefits that are competitive in the marketplace so we can go out and recruit and retain the highest level of employees. We don't want those benefits to be too rich because that wouldn't be fair to our rate payers and our taxpayers. In looking at the three-year strategy, 2018 is the year we're focusing on. That's the middle band in yellow. And just some of the highlights from the strategy for this year, it talks about indexing deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums, to continuing offering the seed money for new enrollees in the HSA, and to target an employer cost share of 82% by increasing premiums on all tiers. One of the big goals that will go out beyond next year would be to achieve an 80-20 cost share. That's something that both the board and the council have communicated to us that is important to you, part of being that market-driven benefits package. And so, this year would be another step in that direction. Slide four shows how our plan has performed as compared to the market over the past five years. And as you can see in the third column there, the column labeled year-over-year change, there's a lot of fluctuation year-to-year. That's to be expected when you are a self-insured entity of our size. You know, your costs are directly driven by claims, and so, you would expect some of that up and down, that fluctuation. The big takeaway from this slide is that over the past five years, we have done a relatively good job of controlling cost. Our average increase in cost for the plan has been under 3%. That's very strong, particularly when you consider the rather hectic environment that health insurance has been in during that time period. And so, you know, at 2.9%, that's pretty strong, and we want to continue that. We can't guarantee that we'll continue meeting that high threshold, but given the environment, we think that what we've been doing has been effective. Slide seven shows the medical, and there's a lot going on this slide, so I'm going to try to walk you through it piece by piece. It shows the medical projections for the current year as well as the status quo projections for 2018. So, if you look at the second column of this table titled 2017 Actual and Projected, you will see that our total planned costs are expected to be 18.2 million this year. The really good news is that that's about 1.1 million under budget. So, the plan is trending really well again this year. Of that 18.2 million, the city and GUC as employers will pay about 15.1 million, and the employees will pay 3.1 million, which results in an employer cost share of 82.7%. So, again, we've had a positive year of experience thus far, and we're expecting the cost share to be 82.7% at the end of the year, which is a little ahead of schedule based on the three-year strategy we had initially developed. The third column, just to the right of the column I just described, shows the 2018 projection without making any changes to plan design or employee contribution. So, that would be status quo. We take no action. We just move forward to the following year. Under that scenario, the total planned costs are projected at 19.7 million with the employee, I'm sorry, with the employers paying 16.6 million, which would be an 83.9% cost share. That's moving the wrong direction from the direction that we want to go there. The last column, the far column on the right, shows the same scenario but with the needed increase split evenly between the employers and employees. That would result in an employer cost share of 83.6%, so a little better than the previous scenario, but still not trending in the direction we want it to go. This was some of the legwork we did in trying to understand what would need to happen to the plan in order to move us in the right direction with the cost share, and we just wanted to share that with you, that we did look at a number of different scenarios and alternatives along the way. I mentioned earlier that the three-year strategy called for us to index deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums this year. And to a large degree, we really rely heavily on Mercer's expertise in that area to ensure that our plan is in line with the market. What you have on the slide here are some of the proposed changes that the Joint Pay and Benefits Committee has recommended to the boards. And really, these changes are intended to accomplish two things. One, as I said before, every couple of years, it's good to go back and do this indexing to make sure that your plan isn't drifting out of line with market. And also, next year is really a critical decision point for the boards related to our PPOs. We currently have a core and an enhanced plan, and the strategy calls for us to make a decision and to consider whether or not we want a single PPO or to maintain the two existing PPOs, core and enhance. What some of these changes are designed to do is to bring those two a little bit closer so that if and when the boards decide that it's time to have a single PPO, the impact on the employees would be minimized because the two plans are a little closer together in terms of their construct.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, if we are trying to get to a single PPO, that means we are phasing out the enhanced plan, correct?
Well, we don't know that. So, initially, the conversation related to having a single PPO was related to the excise tax. The Affordable Care Act has an excise tax that we ran the numbers on and realized it was going to cost both entities millions of dollars over the years to continue to offer the enhanced plan in its current state as it was a couple of years ago. A lot is up in the air right now with healthcare. As of today, the Affordable Care Act is still the law of land. It might not be that way next week, we don't know. There have been some pushouts on the excise tax, so we know we are not at threat for the next couple of years of having the excise tax. So, next year, it might be a year that we defer again to wait to see what the landscape is nationally with healthcare and what that looks like. But there's also the policy question of the boards to say, is there a need for two separate PPOs in the HSA, or is a single PPO sufficient to meet our employees' needs? So, that would be a conversation to be had.
Okay. Councilmember Smiley?
And also, if we did shrink to one PPO, it doesn't necessarily have to be just keeping the enhanced or just keeping the core. You could limit it. You may have your option be something that is some in between what you have now instead of just saying we're getting rid of one of them.
So, with all that in mind then, the recommendation of the joint committee related to health benefits are to make the proposed design, plan, design changes that I just reviewed with you. The number for an employee contribution increase across all tiers would be 12.5%. And Mr. Cowan's going to walk you through kind of what that looks like at the various salary bands and give you some detail on that. We would maintain our current retiree buy-up strategy for retirees based on those 2018 rates, so that doesn't change. And in doing those things, we will have met our 82% cost share target that was a part of the strategic plan for this year.
So, this is a question I was about to ask.
And he's about to come up. One last thing here. On slide 10, you have the kind of what that looks like from a financial perspective. So, on the far-right side here, you have 2018. And what it looks like is the total plan cost for next year with those changes would be 19.5 million. 3.5 million of that would be employee contributions. 16 million of that would be employer contributions, which again gets us to that 82%. So, those are the numbers that backfeed into that comment, that recommendation. Michael?
What this chart here does, it starts with the cost share scenarios for 2018, but what I'd like to do is go back here to this chart here for a second and just look at the projected 2017 number. At the very bottom of that second column there, you have a total net cost to the employer, and that's GUC and the city combined. It stands at approximately $15 million, a little bit more than 15 million. So, just remember that number here for a second. And I'm going to page back forward and take a look at that second column, the first scenario for 2018. This is with no plan design changes as well as the needed increase split between the employer and the employee. You can see the total net cost for the employer going up to 16,542,000. That's approximately a $1.5 million increase in the cost of healthcare to the employer. That's costs that both GUC and the city will have to, would have to make up within its budgeting process, starting with the next fiscal year to 2018-19 budget, also incorporating the changes that were already made into the 2018 budget. Then, we move forward to the third column there, the 2018 with proposed plan design changes, changes that Mr. Pageant just discussed with you previously. You can see there that the net costs go down slightly, about $200,000, to $16,300,000. That's just with the plan design changes only. Then, you move down to the fourth column there, the design changes, plan design changes plus the additional 12.5% increase in employee rates. That brings the overall net employer cost down to approximately 15,989,000, which is still about, almost, what, a $900,000 increase to the employer, both GUC and the city. And if you want to look at that on a proportionate share, I'd say about 2/3 of that increase would be the city of Greenville, and the other 1/3 would be that of GUC. This chart right here shows the proposed rates for next year by employee health plan as well as salary band. And you can see that, for example, the way that you read this is if you look in that third column, it's under the $32,000 employee band. Health savings account, employee-only contribution, the employee portion on a bi-weekly basis would be approximately $5.90. That means that for that healthcare plan, HSA employee-only, the employee is paying approximately 2.3% of the overall cost of that plan. The employer, the city and GUC, for the employees enrolled in that plan is paying the difference to 97.7%. The employee contributions on a bi-weekly basis range from a low of approximately $5.90 for the health savings account employee-only, up to a high of approximately $266 for the enhanced plan family contribution on a bi-weekly basis. And also, from this chart, you can see that the cost share for, the lowest cost share would again be in that health savings account employee-only at 2.3% paid by the employee to a high in the $61,000 band, greater than $61,000 band, of 28.2% for enhanced family coverage. The cost share percentages go up as you move across the salary bands from less than 32,000 to greater than 61,000. This next chart provides a breakdown of the difference between the rates from 2017 and 18, the increase that are projected in next year's plan year. This is basically at the 12.5% rate as well as the needed increase in order to meet the 82% cost share, which is also equal to the second year of our three-year strategy. And again, the overall increase in rates on a bi-weekly basis go from a low of 66 cents for the health savings account employee-only under a less than $32,000 salary band to a high of $29.58 on a bi-weekly basis for enhanced family coverage for those in the $61,000 and over salary band. Now, I think a question was asked at our committee meeting as how that translates back into the salary increase, 3.2% salary increase that employees received this past year. And you have a handout at your seat, and on the second page of that, it provides a very simple, non-scientific comparison. I forgot my card. Turn to the second page, and what this is, is broken down by salary band. So, you have one section, that salary band less than 32,000. The bottom part of that second page is the salary band 46,000 to 61,000, and the two remaining salary bands are on the backside of this page. What this chart here does is it provides a comparison of the increase in rates on a bi-weekly basis and overall increase in the annual contribution that the employee is paying for each of the different health plans. And it kind of puts it in perspective what percentage of the overall salary increase that comprises. For example, if you look at the less than $32,000 salary band, at the very bottom of that, you see a section that says annual salary increase. An employee making 32,278, which is the low end of the band, at a 3.2% increase in this year's wage increase, that equals a little bit more than $1,000. And what you can see in the far-right column of that section, some of the headers highlighted in orange, is what percentage of the annual increase in healthcare costs is covered by the increase in wages. And this goes, for example, the $32,000 and less salary band, for example, the health savings account employee-only, the annual increase for employees that have this coverage is $17.16. That on average comprises 1.66% of the overall increase in salary.
I'm going backwards. I got a question. Going back to the salary bands. So, just for clarification, so, if somebody that makes over $61,000, $623,000, this is a flat, this is the flat amount that they pay?
Exactly. That's right.
What would you say is the percentage of employees, let's say for the city of Greenville, that make over $61,000?
Do you have?
I don't, the average salary is around $51,000.
That's right. It's about $50,000.
If you had to take a guess?
I'd say, well, based off the fact that the average is 50, I'd say half make over that. So, I mean, probably about 30% maybe, 40%?
What was the justification for making this ban so small? Because, you know, somebody that might be in upper level management, if you make $150,000, you're still paying the same thing as somebody who's paying, who makes $61,000.
Both organizations that we've looked at do not have salary bands. It's actually a rarity to have that. Most have moved away from that over time, and it's just a flat rate across the board. We've maintained the salary bands of request of the board and the council over the years, even though the market has moved away from that.
Wouldn't it be more cost beneficial to expand those a little bit?
It would actually make a lot more financial sense for the city and utility to do away with them, but not necessarily for the board.
If you want to get a sense of the distribution, it's on page 11. The enrollment by employee is listed by salary bands.
Let's see, Brayville with Mercer.
And it's about 23.5% for anybody greater than that $61,000 band. But that's over, but the city.
All right. I said four ways, so it's about 30.
Did you see what you guys see as far as salary bands? My recollection was that there's not very many people doing that.
If you look at the employer market, I would say it certainly less than 10%, probably even less than 5% of employers that do salary bands.
That is, I've been here, it's the very place I ever seen.
Yeah, I know they've been in place almost 10 years.
Longer than that, at least 12.
Okay.
Okay. So, again, back on chart 12, that provides the increase by employee pay, health plan as well as salary band. And the attached spreadsheet supplemental documentation provides an overall analysis of how that translates back to the overall increase in salaries for each of the individuals within those salary bands. Now, this next chart, I think the question was asked earlier about the enhanced versus the core. And I think clearly, we can say that we have seen a transition over the last few years of people that are rolled in the enhanced into the core. So, again, the transition has been from enhanced to the core. And that has been primarily because of the increased cost of the enhanced compared to the benefit that the employee receives from the plan. And over time, while the costs have continued to go up enhanced, the features have become very similar to that of the core, and they kind of continue to get closer together. What we'll do in the, at least from the city's perspective, as we move forward into the enrollment period, is work with employees to understand the coverage that they're receiving within each one of the plans, the enhanced and the core, and compare that to the overall cost because ultimately, each employee has to choose the plan that's right for them and where they are within their lifestyle and their personal situation and family situation. But there is a cost associated, and sometimes it could be a significant cost difference between that and the enhanced as well as the core. This chart right here will provide that kind of breakdown to see what the differences are on a bi-weekly basis between the premiums between enhanced and core at each of the different salary bands as well as healthcare plan breakdown. This chart right here provides a breakdown of the retiree contributions proposed in next year's budget, or in next year's plan year, I should say. The fourth column there provides the contribution that the retiree will be making on a monthly basis. And the column beside that, the fifth column, provides the cost share. So, you can see the cost share for retirees goes from anywhere as low as 5% in the core for employee-only, retiree-only, to up to 70% for enhanced family. And also, in the very far right, you can also see the increase in the rates from 2017, ranging from a low of 14 cents per month for core employee-only to a high of $6.28 for enhanced and family. This page is left blank intentionally. That's the easiest one to go through right there. The next chart, we will break down the dental rates for next year. And from here, you can see this has a little bit, this is a more equitable cost share between the city and, or the employer and the employee. It's basically about a 55, 56% employer cost share and a 45% employee. And it shows the financial projections, not only for the plan year 17 as well as projection for 18. And at the bottom, you can also see the change in the contributions on a bi-weekly basis from 17 to 18. That equates to about a 6.3% across-the-board increase in dental rates, and that difference is calculated on the far right, the difference in the contributions, going from a low of 18 cents per bi-weekly pay period dental employee-only to the dental plus, a high of $1.99 for family coverage on a bi-weekly basis. So, in summary, the recommendations that's presented here tonight for the 2018 health plan would be to maintain the current plans offered, the HSA and core and enhanced, make the proposed plan design changes that were outlined at the beginning of the presentation, put the 12.5% increase in employee contributions across the board, and maintain the retiree buy-up strategy for retirees based off the 2018 rates. For the dental plan, it would be to maintain the current plans offered, the dental and the dental plus, and implement the 6.3% increase to employee contributions for both plans as provided. And the supplemental material is just for 2017 reference. It kind of goes backwards in time and revisits how the strategy as well as the rates for the 2017 plan year, the year that we're getting ready to move forward in conclusion of. So, we will take questions from here.
Any questions from the council?
Question from GUC.
Who's the underwriter for?
Mercer's doing the underwriting, signature for care.
Any other questions from the council? So, if we have no questions, it is time to take a motion. So if you have no questions, then it's time to take a motion on approving the recommendations. Am I correct, Dave? If you give me the aye, and let your door light light. So can we have a motion, minimum in council, to accept the recommendations, some of the joint benefits? Okay, is this ready? Moving properly second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Aye, aye.
Thank you. From a GUC commissioner's standpoint, any questions or comments? The alimeration, accept the recommendations of pay and benefits committee?
Please accept, accept the recommendation of the Joint Pay and Benefits Committee.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second. Can you pull on a discussion? All in favor, aye. Close the right side. So accepted, thank you.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
I think I moved.
Second.
GUC, a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
A motion, second.
All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign.